Are we ready to go? All right, then I'll go ahead and call it over. And we'll start with Roll Call.
Chair Lane.
Here.
Commissioner Chenelli's excuse. Commissioner Socklove.
Here.
Commissioner Lamb.
Here.
Commissioner Lerner.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, good. And now the next item on the agenda is for public comment for things not on the agenda. This section is used for some bringing up a topic that maybe will be brought back later or some of the missing meeting and wants to speak on an item that they used that wasn't on the agenda, so we'll open the public hearing for public comment for anything that anyone discusses other than what's on the agenda. That's open. And there's a mad rush to the microphone. So seeing no one interested in that topic, I'll close the public hearing and bring us back to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes from last meeting.
I may not be there.
All right. I need a motion in a second. Both move in a second.
Seven and three.
Same as this. All right. Move in a second. All those and savers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pos, none, four oh. Okay, now new business to open the, uh, the new business is an item for the general plan consistency determination. And lastly, it would be appropriate to get an overview of our, our legal counsel as well as staff, so we'll go ahead and do that. Then we'll, after that discussion, we'll open up any public comment and then we'll bring it back for the, for the, uh... All right, so let's go ahead, let's go ahead.
Sure, so basically you have gone through this before, but in case you haven't, we figured procedurally it's something that you need, so we just wanted to give you a little bit of context. So Governor Code Section sixty-five, four oh one says, "The program shall be submitted to the county or city planning agency for review and report instead official agency as to conformity with the adopted general plan for their up." That is all they directly do. It is basically to make sure that it's consistent with the general plan. It's kind of a final check point to make sure nobody got crazy. So while it's an important rule, it really is a little bit of a, sort of thirty thousand foot view looks okay to us and moving along. I think there are times when we really like a lot of stuffs in it and review and thoughts and comments and other times when it really is a little bit more of a rubber stamping administrative sort of function, and I think this is one of those unlimited lines where it's just always a good deal.
Yeah, the things that we were waiting for, and I, and after I dropped you, I did remember doing it before, we didn't expect that it would be clarity inconsistencies or mistakes, or something that was slopped over from last year's plan that somebody forgot to take out. And that's the kind of, that's the kind of thing that we've been hoping to be used for. We're basically telling somebody else to work to make sure that there wasn't something that they clearly missed. It's not, it's there to, it's definitely not to decide the priority of what's in here. It's to make sure that whatever's in here sounds like the priority that they meant.
We're creating.
Yeah, right.
Exactly, and I know it's hard to imagine here, but there are places where there are abuses of power, and this was just a final check to kind of make sure everything stays in place, so we're not so worried about that here.
All right, so anything else that you're...
And so lastly, just in terms of process, and I'll get into an overview of the capital improvement program and general plan consistency findings that we're asking you to make tonight, but following any recommendation that you make at tonight's meeting, that then gets carried over to the city council at their June meeting, in which they'll look at your recommendation, were these projects found to be consistent with the general plan, and then they take their final action on the actual plan itself. So with that, without repeating myself, we have provided you a copy of the town's draft capital improvement program, our CIP. The CIP would be for fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, which will start this July and run through the years of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. It includes a series of projects that are broken out into three main topic areas. We've got projects identified as drainage improvements to the Atherton Channel. We've got projects that are specific to the town's street and transportation network, and we've got projects specific to the town facilities, buildings, parks, et cetera. So jumping into those three subtopic areas regarding the Atherton Channel, there are two main projects that are identified. The drainage improvement program, which is really implementation steps of the town's adopted drainage master plan. These are things that are mainly going to do with assessing deficiencies in the channel, other identified improvements to make sure that the channel is running effectively and properly. Second to that is breaking into a more specific level at the upper channel, which is a Phase Two monitoring project. This is specific for environmental analysis of habitat and health for the identified red-legged frog, which is a protected species in the state of California, and that the improvements are not harming that protected species and providing it adequate habitat. So we, we, the town, our general plan does not address drainage, so by a matter of fault, we are consistent with the, that component. Moving on to the more, I'd say, needy sections that the general plan does have policy related to, has to do with streets and transportation, I won't go through each of them, but the main, I would say, and when I say main, projects identified that have the largest factor, financial factor associated with them, have to do with the Alcamino Real Complete Streets project, as well as implementation of identified subprojects of the town's bicycle and pedestrian master plan. A lot of these have to do with creation of new, different level targeted bike lanes, cross, safe pedestrian crossings along Alcamino and Meadowfield Road. So we do have a circulation element, and our circulation element is found to have a general objective just to preserve the streets and Atherton scenic routes tied in with some of our other elements that have to do with land use, tree preservation, et cetera. And all of these projects and their implementations are found to be consistent with the town's adopted general plan policy related to safe pedestrian and mechanical safety throughout. Lastly, the projects related to the town buildings, parks, and facilities, obviously the big one would be the implementation of the town's adopted civic center master plan. This is a phased plan. Currently, just for, for reference, the town is in the construction document phase component of that plan, targeted to move into actually the bidding phase in next fiscal year, so twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. There's the library, of course, which is also part, sub-tiered off of that master plan. The town does have an open space element that has specific policies related to mainly Holbrook Palmer Park. Let's just take a step back and remember our plan, our general plan last updated in nineteen ninety-two, so we're going to be getting some updates here to make it consistent with some of the town's more recently adopted plans. But some of the other CIP projects found specifically down at the park were found to be consistent with the policies that our, our general plan currently has adopted, identified for Holbrook Park as our town's primary outdoor recreational facility. They, no commercial uses, upgrades for the community, and so on and so forth. So with all of that, it is the staff's opinion that the identified CIP projects in the draft plan are found to be consistent with the applicable general plan land use objectives and policies, and are recommending, if the commission agrees, to recommend that the council find that consistency argument as well.
Page eleven, the, the overview of the items, the big items, as well as the... there's a bunch of, uh, allocations on them. So that's a, that's a good page just to look at and make sure that there's, you know, if there's a trip to Hawaii or anything like that, you want to discuss it over there. Yeah. So that's the, that's the, that's the, that's the overview. And the assumption I'm having on this, this does correlate to whatever budget, this reflects the budget that is approved, so...
That would be going forward for quite a lot of people.
If you're able to budget this, this chart is good.
Correct. And most of these projects, just taking a step back, are implementing projects identified in other adopted plans. Our civic center master plan, our townwide drainage plan, our bicycle pedestrian improvement plan.
Do we need a motion? Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody has any questions or any, any follow-up that they need to know on this. I do, I know in the past it has been pretty straightforward, and I just want to be thorough in terms of our, our discussion of it.
Well, so the raw data that we came from you, from the general plan, from all the other plans, like you said, like the civic center, et cetera, they were all, they're all just summarized.
They are, so, yeah, those plans, and then what, what we did as staff was provide a consistency analysis with our general plan.
So then whose responsibility is it to make sure that anything proposed is, for instance, any of the traffic safety improvement initiatives, that what's being proposed is actually based on quality evidence of previous projects, or how are we ourselves as a town measuring the effectiveness of the proposed projects?
Yeah, so each project identified in the CIP would go to another tier of project implementation.
That's staff.
It would be staff that would be monitoring it, more than likely would be outsourced to third-party contractors to actually implement those projects, depending on the scale of them. Most of the larger ones are going to probably be outsourced, and some of the more immediate, smaller-scale projects could actually be, the work could be conducted by staff. But in any, in any case, staff would be the one to monitor the implementation of that project.
Okay, any other questions? Any other comments? Okay, any motion in a second?
Right. Move that the planning commission find that the capital improvement for fiscal years two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, and the projects included in that program are consistent with the Atherton general plan for reasons noted in the staff report.
All those neighbors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pos, none, four oh, passes. Yes. Right. Shift to the public hearing in a second. There's two items in here. Let me just sort of overview how we approach this. We'll, we'll hear from the staff in terms of overview of the, of the process, then we'll open up for public comment. We usually start that with the applicants themselves, and then anyone else who would want to talk. Then we close the public comment and bring it back for the discussion and actions appropriate by the, by the commission. So we'll leave that on both items, just so you're... All right. And so the first item is, I don't need you to remove a two berry lane. A request for her, for your removal. Staff, move.
The request before you tonight is for removal of one forty-nine inch Valley Oak tree located in the main building area at Two Berry Lane. The request is not associated with any proposed construction, rather it's a matter of health, safety, and potential damage to property. The trunk of the tree in question is located just two feet away from the portion of the main house where the family sleeps, and the limbs of the tree currently hang over the house. By today's standards, any new construction on this property would have to be located a minimum of forty-one feet away from the tree, or ten times the diameter of the tree, and the main residence would not be allowed in its current location. The tree is approximately two hundred years old, and the main residence was constructed in the nineteen sixties. While chapter eight point ten of the municipal code protects oak trees with a diameter of fifteen point two inches or greater in the main building area, the same chapter states that staff may base the determination for heritage tree removal on the probability of personal injury or significant property damage as a function of proximity to existing structures and other objects of value. Our town arborist has visited the property and certifies that the tree is healthy. However, the applicant's arborist and structural engineer have certified that the potential for future decline in the tree's health resulting in property damage is probable. Any efforts to mitigate the risk of a limb falling onto the house would require excessive pruning of the tree, which would violate arboricultural best management practices. It's also possible that the tree is currently causing damage to the foundation of the home. The applicant is proposing to replace this tree with two forty-eight inch box coastal oak trees, which exceeds the town's required replanting plan of one forty-eight inch native oak tree. The trees are proposed to be located near the property lines adjacent to Berry Lane and Atherton Avenue, which would make them visible from the public right of way and would increase screening to the property. The current trees are minimally visible from the public right of way. To grant this heritage tree removal permit, the commission must find that the removal of the tree would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the Atherton general plan. Although the tree is healthy and protected in the main building area, staff can recommend this approval based on the probability of personal injury and significant damage. The proposed replanting plan would be consistent with the general plan's objective of keeping Atherton rural and thickly wooded. Both Sally, our town arborist, and I are happy to answer any questions you may have at this time, and the applicant, sir present as well.
Tell me why I didn't hear that.
Not really. I visited the site. The tree's very healthy. You can see it from the street, located in the center of the property. I mean, it's just a kind of a...
It's a red tree, a wildlife.
It's kind of, yep.
Yeah.
This, this one was a hard one for me, because I don't like to approve trees that are healthy. But because it's just so close to the house, it's only two feet away, even though I felt like the report for the damage wasn't, it wasn't, didn't really show as much damage as I wanted it to show, I still feel like the tree is still two feet away from the house, so...
I have a question. Why, why is not following agricultural best practices of pruning, even if it's significantly pruned back, a less desirable option than completely removing the tree?
So technically, by best practices currently, it's, you can only prune about twenty-five percent of a tree in one year, and I'm sure they would need to prune more than twenty-five percent. And the problem with that is that when you prune something that harsh, it, it creates a lot of wounds, and then those wounds decay, can be entered into the tree. They create sprouts that are very unstable, so the sprout wood is a lot more likely to fall down to, grow fast, die fast. So it's just not very favorable to cut an oak tree like that.
So you're inviting, um...
Inviting, just, they're gonna have to make big cuts, which make it so there's a lot of decay that could enter in. They would have to maintain the, they would pretty much have to cut it that way every year to maintain the tree like that, so...
And that's while the trunk is growing, why are...
And that's why, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So it actually is inviting something to happen sooner.
Yeah, yeah. Less likely of a limb drop, I mean, of a larger limb drop, but yes, there's some other issues that could, that could occur.
All right, any other questions to the staff? All right, then I'll go ahead and roll public hearing. Any other young kids?
Yeah, I think you...
They did a good job in summarizing the situation. You know, we've, you know, it's a, it's a beautiful tree, you know, no doubt. We love the arboreal nature of Atherton, and obviously, you know, want to protect, you know, as many heritage trees as possible. We have, you know, a number of them on our property. I think it's why, you know, I think it has been a difficult, you know, situation, but you know, this winter especially has been really hard on the family. We have, you know, three young girls that live literally right under, you know, the, the, kind of the perimeter of this tree, and, you know, I know big branches haven't fallen yet, but, you know, hasn't, haven't fallen yet, but small branches have, and there have been nights where we've slept in, you know, different part of the, the house just because, you know, of the fear. And we've seen a lot of healthy seeming trees this year especially, you know, fall down and break, and so just, the danger just seems to greatly outweigh, you know, the benefits of, of keeping the tree. And, you know, I think as the report, you know, I think rightly pointed out, you know, this is not, I don't think a house would be built, you know, today under current, you know, codes this close, you know, to the, to the tree. And so, you know, unfortunately, you know, inheritors of this situation, this difficult situation, and we think that, given this tree is not, you know, visible from the street, that, you know, our planting proposal hopefully actually increases the, kind of, the character of Atherton that we would like to preserve, because, you know, we are on a fairly busy intersection with Berry and Atherton, and those two trees, I think, would be, you know, highly visible. And so we think, you know, the, the plan mitigates, you know, kind of, uh, you know, a lot of the potential loss that, and, and, you know, obviously protects the safety of the occupants of the house, which is our biggest concern.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else here to talk on this matter? All right, nobody's running to the microphone again?
Mike doesn't have anything to say, so...
All right, good. Now I'll go ahead and close public hearing and pass back to the commission for discussion and actions appropriate.
I have an anecdote to relate about the people that live next door to us who had a giant oak right next to their house. It was under the care of a Clenahan and pruned appropriately. It won awards, was on the cover of the almanac, and one day I looked out the window and I saw the entire tree crushed at our house. Luckily, and actually part of that is, they had just walked from that part of the house to the other part. This is a retired couple. So ever since then, I can be sympathetic, if you're polite, and they too had a little fear of that tree through all the years. So it's a sad, sad thing. Sally said she wished she could find something wrong other than...
A way to move it or something.
So that, that's, that's why.
It's ironic, just a month ago, our, I, the eight o'clock in the morning, I heard this whoosh, and across the street, a hundred and ninety-year-old oak tree that looked like it was going to be living forever, and it goes right in front of the tree, at the house and next, across the street. It, it fell over from the roots, not, not the tree, just the whole thing there, and luckily it fell away from the house, just hit their paths, but just, so, yeah, so...
We're all sympathetic.
Yeah, so, I know this one, so, so the, so the key thing will be to, to make sure that it's, it's taken care of, safely, and if it's taken down, has to be done safely. So any, any other comments? No, I, I think that Sally's, you know, did a good job on this one, and it's one of those moments where, you know, we went back to the recreation of the, of the tree group. We would never have a home within a group.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's the whole thing about that, comparing that to what we're talking about and everything else, like, you know, it would be, it would be, that's why we would do some good group. All right, so I need a motion? Yeah, the only, the only thing that I would say is that we're not directing them to do the two plant project, we're...
We're not directing them? That was something they came up with on their own, so, and, and so that's a, you know, we...
Over the curbs.
Yeah, yeah.
Do more if you want to, I mean, it's not...
No, that's good. I just want to make sure that you work, that, that, just a couple things just to think about is the, the gas pipelines and the proximity of the gas supply lines and where that goes, because the front of the house is more likely to have that, and so, you know, for the five-year plan, it could be great for this ten-year plan. I had a tree that I hadn't taken down on my property that had, the roots had wrapped around the gas pipeline. Yeah, so, so...
You know, it's all about that.
Yeah, so just be, just be very conscious of where the gas pipeline is, okay? All right, any motion?
Oh, thank you.
All right.
I move that the planning commission find that the proposed removal of one heritage Valley Oak tree at Two Berry Lane would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan for the reasons outlined in the staff report, and that the commission approve the tree removal.
Move in a second here. All of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pos, none, four oh, plants, all right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The safe removal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And now we have the conditional use permit. We allow it to traverse the town, it's right across the street, so we're going to have more. Oh, and, oh, yeah, I think I have to, so, you come back and you...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, so I don't, so... Give me a kiss here.
No, we're...
Neighbors, they're, they're, they're in it. All right. So with that, we'll go ahead and talk about the conditional use permit for one fifty authorized, in regard to schools, we've got a conditional use permit to allow temporary placement of seven portable buildings, staff report.
Thank you. So the conditional use permit request before you tonight is specifically to allow Sacred Heart School to install, temporarily install, seven temporary portable buildings to accommodate other improvements to existing buildings on the site that are approved identified projects in their adopted master plan. So specifically, the need for these temporary portables has to do with two projects that the school would be doing. First would be a voluntary seismic upgrade to their existing gym and some internal tenant improvements to the inside of that building. And then the second identified project that would trigger the need for these temporary portables, which would, I should back up and describe that these portable buildings would serve as classrooms and other office functions for the staff and the students there. And so that second project identified is the planned renovation and replacement of their Siegel Hall with a new academic arts building. So this conditional use permit is, it's standalone, it's not associated with any of the other conditional use permits that are approved for the school that allows other uses to operate. So it's just to allow for those portables to be located on their practice field, which, if you're familiar with the, with the property, above Elena Avenue, so their closest residents would be opposite side of the street on Elena, and no trees would be affected because the location of those portables would be smack dab in the middle of that turf field. In terms of timing, the school anticipates that the duration of the construction for the two projects that I mentioned could continue somewhere in the range of twenty-four to thirty-six months. What this conditional use permit would require is that those portables be removed sixty days from the final of whichever of those permits happens last. Presumably that would be Siegel Hall, but I'm sure Sacred Heart could give you a little bit more detail on their implementation of construction.
So the maximum would be thirty-eight months?
Um, as soon, the maximum would be forty-eight months.
Thirty, thirty...
Thirty-eight months, right. The time I'm letting it start, yeah.
All right. To start construction or start, start installing the, the temporaries?
Well, they couldn't install the temporaries until permit is issued.
Okay.
So as I mentioned, the projects identified are consistent with their adopted master plan, so no new environmental review, nor amendments to any of their existing approval documents, conditional use permits, or the plan itself would be required with the specifics of this request. So with the conditions as noted in the CUP or conditional use permit, staff is recommending approval of the project. I'm happy to answer any questions. Sacred Heart is here as well. I did have a chance to speak with their representative. They did do outreach to the neighbors, and no comment was received. We also sent notice, of course, of this meeting tonight and did not receive any inquiries.
All right. Any questions to the staff?
I have a question. So must the use of the portables coincide with the start of the construction, or can the use of the portables start as soon as the application is approved? My concern being, if there's students in the portables before it's absolutely necessary to move them from their current buildings, it, it puts them in less favorable conditions for a longer period of time.
So the way that the conditional use permit language was crafted was to allow the use of the portables as academic, with academic and office functions during the gym seismic upgrade. So I would implement and interpret that as you cannot use those portables for classroom and office functions until the associated trigger, i.e. the seismic upgrade of McGane, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, gym, begets, which requires a permit to be issued by the town.
So I'll, maybe I'll ask this of the, the applicant, but, uh, I don't understand, so these are, these are classrooms, but the gym is not a classroom, so why would there have to be a transition of kids?
I believe there's space within the gym building that is utilized for classroom purposes, but, um...
I'm, so, all right, that's, that's about it.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Any other questions? All right, go ahead and open the public comment for the sixty people that are here at all.
Thank you, everyone. I'm Mike Dwyer. I'm the director of operations. I actually met all of you last year when I presented the master plan update. We have a great opportunity right now with our gym. We had a developer donor step forward and offer to upgrade the gym. We had had it evaluated for seismic stability and found that it was deficient, and we immediately set plans to do a voluntary upgrade of the facility. And while we planned to do this, we were going to do it on our own, and then the developer stepped forward and said, "I will do this for you, and I'm going to remodel the, the rest of the gym for you." So what that did for us is it gave us an opportunity to take advantage of this, but it also made us accelerate a certain plan that we had to relocate those classrooms out into the future in twenty nineteen, which is when we were going to complete the new building. But unfortunately, now they have to be relocated ahead of time to convert that gym into a full sports athletic gym, so that therefore relocates the classrooms.
Okay.
And then, because we have to manipulate curricul... And then, uh, because we have to, uh, manipulate curriculum, we had to slide certain groups into the portables because the ones we are relocating from the gym space would not be, we would not be able to accommodate them in the portables.
Okay.
So it's just kind of moving the pieces around. Uh, the second part of the, the, the project is to re- replace Siegel Hall, which we discussed last year, uh, with a new academic arts building that, um, will be, in our opinion, something that will allow us to serve our students now and in the future. We have no plans to ask for, um, another cap on our, uh, our attendance, we're keeping that the way it is. This is just to accommodate the needs, our present needs and any future needs we might have as curriculum changes.
I, I too, um, what are the safety features within the portables? Do you have, um, fire sprinklers, is there running water or there bathrooms?
So number one, um, the sprinklers are not required.
Oh, okay.
And we've, we've met with the fire department. There are certain specifics when sprinklers are, uh, required. And as long as we put smoke detectors and either heat or smoke detectors underneath and within, we will meet the code. And that's a code specified by the state of California. We've also talked to the, the city planners about this as well, uh, the building department. And, um, we're going to be going before them again either Friday or, no, not Friday, next week sometime, um, to talk about placement of the portables on this field. Uh, first step, of course, is to, is to get the conditional use permit. Um, but that's the safety features, we're gonna have the smoke alarms, we'll have pole stations. Uh, there will not be any restrooms there, there is a restroom facility right next to it. And then there's a restroom facility inside a building that's nearby. Uh, so our architect has drawn up plans to ask the, the building department if this is adequate. They've, um, approved the turf as an accessible, ADA accessible, um, mechanism for us to place these portables. So, uh, one extra measure that has nothing to do with nothing, but I like it, is that there's crumb rubber on this turf. And one of the things is that we don't like crumb rubber, we got rid of that in, on our new football field. So we're going through the extra step of vacuuming up that crumb rubber as we speak, they're doing it this week. And we're gonna replace it with an organic substance, so that when the portables are sitting on there, number one, you're not ex- going excessive with the heat load, which will make the air conditioning units work way overtime. Cause it's a difference of tw- fifteen, twenty degrees sometimes with the heat. So that and the off gases from tire smell, um, if you're sitting there all day can be really tiresome. So that's, those are some of the steps we're taking to try to make everyone comfortable in this process.
And I, I think this is probably not relevant to the decision we make, um, necessarily. I imagine as long as the portables are approved by various other entities, for instance, the fire department, et cetera. I'm just really asking out of curiosity as a parent and a community member, thinking about kids out there, um, you know, potentially being trapped in an unsafe position and can emergency vehicles get quick and ready access? Things of that nature.
And that's great that you asked that, and, and that is one of the factors that we looked at when we looked at that field as our placement for the portables. There's no, there are no trees, there's nothing in front of it from the parking lot. We have a fence there now, but that fence will come down and then the fire department will have full access. We're adding, um, a fire hydrant for this process. So, uh, again, we've met with the fire department now twice and we'll meet with them a third time next week along with the building department. And they'll be the ones giving us occupancy permits. We won't be moving anyone in there until August. Uh, we might move furniture in, but we're not moving the students in until August.
Alright, any questions?
No.
Uh, just a question on the map. It looks like that on the, on the four minutes are back to back or two, or two and two back to back. Um, I have a senior back to back, or?
There are, there are, um, four and then three, I think, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, so is there a walkway between the two or, well, how, how much space is that between the two of them?
It's a utility walkway to allow for the, um, electrical and air conditioning units. So, let's stick out, I would say four to five feet is probably what's there, but we will have it blocked off on the ends.
That's what I just, I'm concerned that's, that's one of those bad places that, that, uh, things, you know, small places.
Right.
Alright, good. Alright, any other questions? Alright, great, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
I'll bring up, I'll be coming back for, uh, discussion and action as appropriate, uh, any questions? I don't see anything here that's, uh, that's, uh, been ground breaking except for the buildings that you'd be working on, so, uh.
Right, 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 no, I, I appreciate the thoroughness of your review and, and thought with regard to student safety and all that.
Yes, I think it was very well presented and well planned at the time, so I'm comfortable with that too.
A lot of the work you've done, uh, is, has worked out very well in, in the traffic plan that you, you all put together is amazing, so, um, uh, it's, it's, it's really good, I love the work that's done there. Alright, I need a motion second.
I made a motion.
Alright, good, right here.
Oh, thank you so much. I move that the planning commission make the findings recommended in the staff report and approve the conditional use permit for the Sacred Heart School's proposed location of seven temporary portable buildings on the Maury practice field to accommodate classroom and office functions dislocated during the McGannan gym seismic retrofit and T I project, with the conditions as stated in the draft conditional use permit certificate.
Close, close.
Second.
Second, okay. On cue?
Yes.
That was very smooth. Alright, all of the papers say aye? Aye? Close, none, ask the three, you have it, alright, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Alright. Mr. Lamb, can you hear us?
Yes, where's?
Outside, outside. Was he hiding?
I think he went over there, yeah.
There he is.
There he is.
Yes, I did.
Thank you. It's good to see you.
I couldn't get the top off the Ferrari.
Just cut, just cut through it. That's why I never lock it, you should try the door. Alright, um, alright, commissions report, I have number six. Anyone have anything?
Actually, a question. Um, I, I had a senior moment of a question I had, uh, I said that when I locked out the door and then I walked out and I forgot it. Um, did the council over here, our oldest guy, did, did they take action on the height, the, 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 uh, they did? Okay, so that's done, it is done, everything's done, okay?
Alright, alright.
Good. Um, did, and, and do we have, is, is Paul coming back for the planning commission?
Yes.
Yes, good, for, he's, he's put his name in again.
I believe so. I think that's, I saw that picture through the little word office.
Is he eligible for an approval?
Yes, he's on that.
Yes, mhm.
Oh, is that right? Good, good, okay, I thought this was his thing.
I love that.
No, he, yeah, I, he wanted to be here tonight, but that's another.
I'm really, I'm the old, the old timer in so many ways.
Yes. Older than you think.
Alright, any, any other comments? Uh, I'll just bring one thing, uh, I, I got a call to the main office, uh, from a woman named Dawn Nelson Lewis on a full run end and all. And he was, uh, he wanted to talk about the, uh, discussion we had about the, uh, shadow, uh, the, uh, the shadow unit of, of landscaping. Remember that, yeah? So, so I went over to his home and we talked, we talked for about an hour and a half, so just going through sort of thing. He had, he has, he had no, uh, uh, impact himself and, and the issue, we thought the issue was interesting because he saw that as a sort of ongoing issue. And one, one of the things he did, you know, he sent a, a letter to the, to the, uh, council. And I can't remember if his letter was included in our packet or not. Well, uh, I don't remember if it had, he was sent, sent to the council, I don't know if they were about it. But, uh, he also has some pictures of the type of things that are out there. One of them was, what he, what triggered for him was, uh, along his snow, there's a, was a water home. Uh, and the, um, the approval was for these types of, uh, sorry, these types of mitigation along the fence. And his concern was that type of mitigation becomes this, you know? And so it ends up being this huge, this huge thing. And when, when, one of the things we talked about is trying to make sure that, that these things are thought of. But this, this particular planting of this Italian cypress, they does, they go, you know? A lot of times you've seen them alongside the pools, but if you let them go, they, this is, this one, this one here is like three and a half stories, four stories. So that could be, that could be just a green, monster green wall. So it's just one of those things we, we could think about in terms of, uh, there's nothing in our ordinance that wouldn't allow a current, uh, person to do this, but we might be able to, to be aware of the mitigation, uh, of, of new, of new activity. And it's one of those things we can, we can influence even a compliance issue. Alright, just that, so I just wanted to know, one, he, he called the office director, I think for me, I didn't know what it was about, but I called him back and he brought that. Alright, so, uh, and he was, he was comfortable with our conversation, we had a very good conversation. He was a very nice man and, and, uh, he, he'd be just a good person to get involved with whatever he thought about, cause he was just a good, good thinker. Alright, that's, that's my report. Anything else? Staff report?
Um, two quick things, uh, follow-up actually from the last meeting, um, in April. Regarding the general plan update, um, the, I wasn't, I wasn't directly involved in this, but I just wanted to look back to, um, make it clear to the commission on how the process of the general plan update is going to run. Staff brought forward to the council different options on how we could do a general plan update. One being quite extensive, uh, steering committees, conforming community subgroups, so on and so forth, this budget. And that was not, um, the direction that was approved. So we have a, a workable budget in terms of community meetings. I, I felt that there may have been some, um, thought that that was going to happen and it will be happening in the form of study sessions here at the planning commission. So I just wanted to bring that up so that when it does come forward, it will be clear.
Yeah, so that people are, are going to speak at our, at our sessions.
Yes.
Did you consider a blue ribbon pal?
I, 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 I was not involved with that.
Yeah, I answered everything.
Yeah. And then, um, there was a question at the last meeting.
Excuse yourself for this conversation.
There was a question at the last meeting regarding that project at forty-six Almond Row, which, um, you had seen in the form of an appeal of payment of the penalty fee.
Yeah.
And confirmed that that fee of thirty thousand dollars was paid. Um, there's, there were several permits associated with that property. The main residence and all the accessory buildings, those have all been final. So whatever work is being conducted there now should be under their active permits, which have to do with, let me see what they say, entry gate generators and, um, some water fountain features. So, yeah.
Thank you for that.
Yes, thank you.
I have, I have a question, uh, the other question that I had was on, um, oh, on portable houses where we had done the, the asshole, or, or, whatever we did.
Accessory dwelling unit?
Accessory.
Yes.
Have we seen any, uh, applications yet for?
Not formally, no, not yet. But we've had a ton, a ton of folks coming in just to gain an understanding of what the new ordinance is, how it could or could not affect their, um, either existing conditions of their property or what they propose to do, um, but nothing formally, so.
Sure, I would have thought that people, that architects would have seen that and immediately jumped out on that.
Has there been any problem with the Airbnb kind of thing that we saw on the almanac this week that's going on in Woodside? Where people are doing that against the rules?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think I, not recently, I haven't heard of it. There have been, uh, maybe a few instances several months back, I don't know if you were ever involved with us, but I think we were able, we, the town were able to, um, yeah, correct this.
It's all, um, it's sort of complaint-based enforcement around here.
Yeah.
And so, uh, so, which I, it did in some ways work really well. Um, and so I'm not currently aware of anything that's a problem. The PD usually takes it first and moves around it, I don't, we don't.
Yeah, we have it here. And they'll come to us, yeah.
No, I just read the paper, what's going on in Woodside.
Yeah, yeah, no, and, and we'll hear it because planning will be the first hit, can we have this kind of use? And if they, or, no, if the answer is no, an aftertune that we haven't had that, like, we're so.
I think just to add a wrinkle, I think, um, I've had conversations with the council as well that there's concerns about, um, businesses getting a house and using or, or, you know, using space during the day, but I don't have any evidence of that, but there was some suspicion. Also, um, birthing centers, people coming here and have their children in the U S that rent a room and a house. Um, it's, it's obviously tricky, you can't prevent it if somebody is just giving that room for use. If it is a business, that's violation, that's really hard to prove. We've also had allegations that, um, that's what makes it a little easier to enforce is, um, having more bedrooms than are legally allowed. Um, you know, in illegally constructed bedrooms in order to create this, in which case, you know, code enforcement, building is all gonna get involved. So, you know, there's certain avenues, but, um, all those things they watch for pretty carefully because those are, you know, obviously more likely for a neighbor to know this, so, it's.
Yeah.
And birthing centers is a good idea. Sort of revenue generating.
I want you to know, just because they don't have, if there's six cars in my house, we don't have to do that. And people walking in, it's gross. Alright, any, any other?
That's all eighteen scrolls.
Any, uh, uh, that, that is the, uh, the, um, the, other than the plan, is there anything else that we need to leave to give up for the last, uh, last six or seven months of the, of the year?
Uh, well, we will be coming back in another study session format with, um, the tree discussion on potential revisions for discussion of the, um, ordinance.
Alright, alright, good, that's it, great. Alright, then, uh, then that's it, that's, uh, thank you. Uh, you voted to adjourn? Wait, wait, no. No, motions are aside. Whoa, we got twelve seconds and there's only four people on there. Wait a second, all the neighbors say aye?
Aye.